Good evening. We are calling the August 5th regular Town Council meeting agenda to order. Role call, Town Clerk Melendez, would you like to do the role call?
Yes. Counselor Bordaloon?
I'm here.
Good.
Here.
Jones?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Pacino?
Here.
Russ?
Here.
And Mayor Franco?
I am here. Thank you. Do not conduct salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any recognition awards and memorials this evening, nor public hearings, so we were going to go on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from the citizens to address the council. Please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to two minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. The total time allotted for this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. In order to preserve the order of the meeting as referenced in Rule 5H of the Rules and Procedures to Govern the 34th Town Council, to speak in person during this portion of the meeting, people were to sign up at the meeting before the call to order. You may also register to speak in person in advance by email at council@groton-ct.gov, no later than 4:00 PM on the day before the meeting.
Point of information?
Your question.
So, for me, I'm just, I have a question. I was not aware that we were changing the speaking time and putting a restraint to the amount of time, which we've never done in the past, saying, like, we, if you changed it from the normal speaking time, you've, you didn't say there was a limit to 30 minutes total. So I'm just curious where all this come from?
It's in Rule 5H of our rules.
It's not something we've ever used in any other public comments?
It is in Rule 5H. Thank you.
So what?
So, town, the town, I have a comment I would like to make before we begin citizens' comments. I'd like to clarify certain facts to facilitate the timely consideration and order of this meeting and the Town Council's agenda items of tonight's scheduled town business. First, Sergeant Brian Fahey is not and never has been employed by the Town of Groton. He is a sergeant with the Connecticut State Police. Similarly, any officers or attorneys assigned to the New London Superior Court are State of Connecticut employees who work with a Connecticut judicial branch, and not for the Town of Groton or its police department. The Town of Groton, including the Town Council, Town Manager, Police Chief, or any other town employee, does not have jurisdiction or authority to make decisions regarding additional criminal charges related to the events of July 11th. At this time, this remains an active investigation, and any decisions on criminal charges as a result of that incident rest solely with the State Prosecutor's Office. We will now take citizens' comments. First up is Sean Paul Reyes.
You're a candidate?
It is now 6:35. We are beginning public comment.
So you guys have no authority over Sergeant Brian Fahey, former Sergeant Brian Fahey, but you have plenty of authority, your police department has plenty of authority to level baseless felonious charges against myself and my cameraman? That's, that's good to, uh, it's good to know. My name is Sean Paul Reyes. I'm an independent journalist and the founder of Long Island Audit. I'm, most importantly, a citizen who cares deeply about accountability and public trust in law enforcement. On July 11th, 2025, something happened here that should alarm every single person who believes in justice. A Connecticut State Police Sergeant, Brian Fahey, brandished a firearm, physically assaulted me, and even spat in my face while I was engaged in a constitutionally protected activity, asking questions about suspected overtime fraud, a matter of clear public concern. Let me be very clear, I was 150 feet away from his door on my way out when this armed lunatic stormed out of his house with a gun in one hand, a phone in the other, and rage in his voice. He got in my face, bumped into me, threatened me, pointed his weapon near me, and then spit directly in my face and mouth, all while falsely claiming to 911 that I threatened to kill him, which is a crime for anybody else. This wasn't law enforcement. This was lawless under the color of authority. What happened next? The Groton Police Department, I like how, Mayor, you like to try and single yourself out, you know, "We're not in charge of the Connecticut State Police," or "New London Judicial District," but what happened next? Your police department arrived, and instead of arresting the aggressor, the person who committed felonies, they arrested me and my cameraman on baseless charges of felony voyeurism, criminal trespass, and breach of the peace. My bond, which was set by your police department, was originally set at $10,000. But, on body camera, they told me they were receiving calls from high up. Was it you? Was it you? Who were the calls from high up? Was it the police chief who worked for the Connecticut State Police for 22 years? They received calls from high up, and they said, "Whoa, now your bond is $75,000." $75,000.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
This isn't a nice late incident.
Mr. Reyes, you didn't, you did not announce your address.
Accountability is optional. Transparency is an optional.
Thank you.
And it is your public duty as public servants-
Your time has, you're out of order.
-to do the right thing-
You're out of order.
...because the people of Groton, the people of Connecticut, and the people of this country-
Thank you. Your time has expired.
...deserve better. You're cowards for limiting it to two minutes.
You didn't, you didn't list your address. Mr. Reyes, you did not list your address.
Ah!
Mr. Reyes, you did not list your address.
(inaudible)
Mr. Burt, is a address required to be able to speak?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Up next is Leroy Truth. If we do not, if we do not have order within the chamber, I, I do have the authority to clear the chamber. Thank you. Leroy Truth.
I'm disgusted by you, Mayor Franco.
Your name?
I am Leroy Truth of Leroy Truth Investigations on YouTube. Please subscribe to me now. Good evening, everyone. Let me just say, I get it. I totally understand why Connecticut State Trooper Sergeant Brian Fahey would spit directly into the mouth of peaceful journalist Sean of Long Island Audit. I mean, Sean had the unmitigated gall, the unspeakable audacity to walk, not run. You can look up, Mayor Franco, give a little respect here. Sean had the audacity to walk, not run, not teleport, not evaporate at 186,000 miles per second off Fahey's property after being told to leave. I mean, come on, Sean. What were you thinking? Everyone knows when a Connecticut State Trooper with an ego the size of his government pension says, "Get off my lawn," you're supposed to dematerialize like you're in a Marvel movie. And the way Sean dared to stand there with a camera, not a gun, not a grenade, but a cannon, or a Sony, or an iPhone, or whatever those damn peaceful auditors use these days, he might as well have launched a nuke, right? The horror, the tragedy, the nerve. But seriously, let's flip the script, because that's what this moment demands. Sergeant Brian Fahey is not a hero. He is not a protector. He is a government-issued goon with a badge and a bubbling psychological breakdown. He didn't have to come out of his house. He wasn't under threat. He wasn't provoked. He chose to close the distance. And you try to get away from responsibility. The reason that this shite show happened, number one, Brian Fahey spitting into the mouth of Sean Long Island Audit; number two, your police, the Groton Police, arresting, mind-blowingly arresting, an innocent journalist and an innocent cameraman. Who gave that order, Mayor Franco? Who gave that order? That's why we're here. Don't blame this man. He's a journalist. He's been doing what journalists have done for generations, try to get the truth, and you can't handle the truth!
What do you have to say?
Up next. Vinnie is up next.
Um, what you tried to do with the, uh, the time, I'm not giving you my name.
I'm sorry, your name?
You don't deserve my name. You don't deserve an address. Thank you. All right. What you did with the time, which you've never done before, limiting this, this public speaking time to two minutes, is terrible. I, I commend you for bringing that point up, a rule that's never been used. This is all to silence "we, the people." Us. We want a voice, but now you've limited our voice. You've limited the speaking time just to 30 minutes. 30 minutes. You see how many people are here? You don't want to hear us. That's why you limited the time. Disgusting. All right, so, I'm here today because of what happened to Sean Paul Reyes. In your town, he was arrested for peacefully filming and asking questions, something protected by the First Amendment. At the same time, a police officer allegedly spit on him, pulled a gun, and was not charged. That's not fair. That's a double standard. Groton now has a choice. Will you stand up for fairness? I don't think you will. I definitely don't think you will. You just want to hide it under the fucking rug. Truth and the rights of the people, or will you protect the bad behavior by staying silent? I bet you will. I bet you will. Now, I ask you to take this seriously. Look into what happened. Be open and public, and make sure this doesn't happen again. I, I would like the other council members to, to stand up and speak up, because this mayor clearly won't. Please. This is, this is crazy.
Up next is Full Court Press.
Good evening. To my fellow freedom enforcers who showed up tonight in the name of accountability, and to those, men and women in uniforms, still confused about who the criminal was in Long Island Audit video. Spoiler alert, it wasn't the guys with the camera. My name is Full Court Press, and tonight I've got a humble request. Arrest me. I see how you operate, and I don't want to miss my turn. In Groton, you don't need to break the law to be arrested. You just need to document someone else breaking it. Let's walk through it, slowly, for those still taking notes in denial. A journalist, Long Island Audit, knocks on a public official's door, leaves when asked, calm and respectful, then bursts out of the house, little Brian Fahey, off-duty, armed, enraged, follows the man toward the street, spits in his face, gun on his hip, badge in his mouth, ego on full auto. What does Groton PD do? Do they arrest the armed man who just committed assault? The one shouting, "I'm a goddamn Connecticut State Trooper," like it's a spell against accountability? Nope. You arrest the guy asking questions. And for extra laughs, you arrest the cameraman too. Because apparently in Groton, the real threat isn't the guy with the gun, it's the guy with the tripod. If irony were a crime, you'd be doing life without parole. Let's talk law. Connecticut General State Statute 53A 61, spitting is assault. Physical injury includes pain or impairment of condition. Saliva counts. That's not just gross, that's criminal, and the only people denying it are the ones protecting little Brian Fahey. What he did wasn't disgusting. It was a crime committed in public, on camera, under color of authority. And your response? Cowardice, corruption, collusion. So here I am, clean record, voice steady, camera ready, and I dare you to make your next mistake. So go ahead, arrest me. Throw me in a cruiser, I'll livestream it, narrate it in real time, and by the time the ink dries on your report, half the country will know your names, and none of them will spell "hero."
Thank you. Up next is John Felix.
Who's up next?
John Felix.
Hi, John Felix, Transparency, Accountability Coalition. You could try to say you don't have jurisdiction. You do have jurisdiction over the Groton PD. They did make a false arrest against Sean Paul. He's not the criminal. He's the victim of a Connecticut State Trooper. And you're saying you're not protecting him, but your PD did protect him. And you're trying to deflect the blame onto other people. You had jurisdiction over the people who made the false arrest, and your constituents are gonna have to pay for it. You understand that, right? You don't just get to say, "Oh, it's not me. Oh, it's not me." It is you. You are in charge of them. I flew all the way up from Florida to come here to talk directly to you. What's wrong with you? And now you're taking three minutes away from me? You don't think that's just gonna arraign us more? How would you like us almost spit in your mouth? Would you like that? What if they did it to your child? What would you do then? Would you have your husband beat somebody up? Is that how you operate? The fuck is wrong with you? You have jurisdiction over the Groton PD. The Groton PD fucking did this. And now they're maliciously prosecuting him, and your fucking constituents are gonna have to fucking pay for it. You feel good about yourself? You gonna take some responsibility or not? If you fucking vote for this dumbass lady ever again, you, you get what you fucking deserve, stupid ass.
Up next, "We, the People" news.
Is this Groton, Connecticut, or is this rotten Connecticut? Because right now, what I'm seeing is a whole bunch of rotten's. Good evening, council members, mayor, and fellow Americans. I'm not here tonight to cause a scene. I'm here because the line has been crossed, and that line was spit on, stomped on, and violated by a disgraced and now retired Connecticut State Trooper Sergeant Fahey. Last month, Sean Paul Reyes of Long Island Audit, a journalist, a First Amendment auditor, a man holding a camera, was assaulted, spit on, cursed at, by that nasty, wretched, vile animal. Not in a back alley, not during a riot, but in broad daylight, as he was engaged in his duties as a journalist and exercising the rights guaranteed under the Constitution. And what happened next? Nothing. No arrest, no suspension, no accountability. Except for this man. He was arrested. His cameraman was arrested. Connecticut sent a, sent a clear message, the same message we've seen with Mississippi, with me, the same message out of New Jersey with Leroy Truth, that journalism is a threat, that transparency must be punished, that cops can commit crimes on camera and walk away clean. But this is not how it's supposed to be. We have three branches of government for a reason. When the courts won't act, when the legislature stays silent, the executive branch, this town, this city council, this mayor, you have the power to say enough is enough. You don't work for the state police. You don't answer to bad cops. You answer to the people. And the people are watching.
Thank you.
The nation is watching.
Thank you.
And the world is watching to see if Groton has a spine.
Your time has expired. Up next is the Long Island Audit.
So I ask you tonight, pass a resolution to condemn this act of violence. Defend the First Amendment.
Thank you. You're-
Because we don't stand up for our rights-
You're out of order.
...and once they're gone-
We're gonna take a recess now. Can we stop?
...they don't come back without a fight. Thank you.
We're gonna take a recess. If this continues, if people continue to go over their time, which is fair to all who would like to speak, we will recess the meeting until, and then come back. Up next, it says the Long Island Audit. No, you can only speak once. Up next is James D. Up next is James D.
I'll take the Long Island Audit.
James D.
I'll take the Long Island Audit. The Long Island Audit, too.
I had no intention to come up here and speak, but I wanted to show support for Sean. What I saw was despicable. I'm gonna look at the police officer in here, because that's what I care about. Your department arrested this man? You should be ashamed of yourself. Your whole department should be ashamed of yourself. Okay? You guys are doing the wrong thing to the wrong people. Crime was committed, and, and you covered it up because the guy's a state trooper? What would your mom think? What would your parents think? Your kids? Do they know what happened? Did you go home and say, "Hey, our department arrested this man"? Think about the future, the children, everyone. This is the example you and your department are setting. And Mayor, you're in this as well. This is your department. You oversee them. Get them in fucking order. I mean, really, enough's enough. Long Island Audit.
Up next is James D.
Hello. In a society, justice must stand as impartial pillar that upholds fairness, equity, and the rule of law. When justice is divided into tiers, where some individuals receive preferential treatment based on wealth, status, or power, it undermines the very essence of what it means to be a free society. A tiered justice system not only breeds inequality, it also fosters resentment and distrust. As Thomas Jefferson once warned, laws and institutions must go hand in hand with progress of, of the human mind. For this progress to be genuine, it requires a justice system that is blind to power and privilege. When justice becomes a tool for the elite, those who are disadvantaged feel the system is rigged against them, diminishes the trust necessary for a functioning free society. Alexander Hamilton, one of our nation's most influential founders, also cautioned that the first duty of a society is justice. But when justice is doled out unevenly, when some individuals face harsher sentences than others for the same crime, or are completely not held accountable for their crime, it erodes the societal contracts. Citizens begin to question whether the laws are truly just, which most are not, or whether they exist simply to protect the powerful. Our Constitution was written by James Madison, was founded on, as, as written by James Madison, was founded on the idea that all men are created equal, all, all of us citizens are created equal. And that equality before the law should be non-negotiable. If we allow any form of hierarchy in our justice system, we risk creating a society where the law becomes a tool of oppression rather than a shield of freedom. And we're seeing that every day. We saw it with Long Island Audit. We see it all over the country every day, where, where government officials and police officers are not held accountable for their bad actions. And it, it falls back, what they said earlier today, or this evening, that falls back on the people of this town. They're gonna, you're going to get sued, and you're gonna have to pay, and they're gonna have to pay.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Up next is Lauren Gothier.
Good evening, council. Lauren Gothier, 31, Boardson Road. If I knew I could use the F-word, I certainly would have used it way before now, but, and anyways, I'll keep my comments truncated. I'm here to speak about Pleasant Valley and the preferred developer that's on your agenda again tonight for some reason. There's already been plenty of arguments made on why Pleasant Valley is the most appropriate spot for District 4 to receive a recreation facility, including parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. But I want to specifically focus on the two arguments that have been made to turn Pleasant Valley into a high-density housing complex instead. Those two arguments being that there aren't many other areas in town for housing to go. This is incorrect. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on rezoning the IM District, which is that area by the Pequot Emergency Department, and Mystic Marriott, where that controversial data center was supposed to go. Recently, we've rezoned that so that multifamily housing can be built there. That's a large area that's now open to those types of developments. In addition, I know Groton City has been working towards rezoning to allow for housing on Bridge Street, to advantageously use the topography there to, to add more density. So, those are just two quick examples. But to say that these 300 apartments can't go anywhere else is incorrect. And then the other argument being made that we have to put these schools back on the tax rolls seems to only apply to the western side of town, where the, this town, the Town of Groton, derives our identity as the submarine capital of the world. These high-density apartments at these schools are apparently only applicable to the city of Groton and District 4, but not S.B. Butler or Claude Chester. And I feel like if you're going to discriminate against this side of town, at least be consistent in your logic. So, I've been through, like, the five stages of grief on this project, and with you, you councilors, I just won't accept it. I, I think that you guys can and should understand the opportunity cost here, and how deeply this will affect our community. Please don't vote for this developer.
Thank you. Up next is Michael Boucher.
I think you said my name, but I can't hear you.
Boucher?
That's incorrect. Thank you.
Mike Boucher, 16 Hillside Avenue. The Community Investment Fund is a State Department grant program to promote economic and community development. At a COW meeting, the agenda package listed three legitimate projects for CIF. Route 117, Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley School, and the athletic fields for 10 million. Without any notice before the meeting, a very questionable City of Groton seawall application appeared during the CIF portion of the COW meeting. The City of Groton seawall improvement for, was for 9.8 million. Director Reinhart provided very little information and simply stated that legend, other stuff were hit, and nothing much else. Council Bordaloon was prevented from gaining any information about the seawall, and thus prevented from looking after the best interest of our Groton neighborhoods and advocating for athletic fields. A motion was made and passed to support the seawall cost overruns for 9.8 million instead of athletic fields. Portia was the only council who stood up and supported our neighborhood athletic fields, and refused to support the bailout of the City of Groton seawall debacle. The Town Council owes the Groton community and Council Bordaloon apology for not allowing discussion on the seawall debacle. Reiner's comments on the failed seawall project were woefully incomplete and misleading. I am concerned about Franco's vote in the matter, which resulted in no funding for Groton Heights, considering all the controversy she is already involved in, in Groton Heights School. I am concerned with Russk's vote in supporting the City of Groton with a $9.8 million bailout, and now she could become the paid mayor of the City of Groton. I challenge the town staff and Town Council to release any engineering studies stating that the seawall was in any danger of failing, to provide all communications with the City of Groton and the state concerning the funding of the seawall and the town attorney's opinion on the definition of seawall and highway to the public. Please meet with BL Companies and ask about the RFP for the seawall, which did not guarantee the locations of infrastructure, or ask why the design of the seawall, which required bedrock to be anchored-
Thank you.
...only had three test drillings for 350 feet-
Your time has expired.
...and one of those drillings failed to find any bedrock. The city failed miserably with their application, and you need to know more.
Up next is Michael Fontaine.
Good evening, council. I've been a Groton resident for almost five years, formerly of Norwich. I actually had the distinction of having Chief Savaro, Chief Fazaro be my neighbor for three doors down. So I know him very well from the first 10 years of my life, so much so that the chief of Norwich, his father, attended both of my family's funerals. What I saw in July, what the police department did to this man, falsely arresting him, really concerned me. This is the first time I ever addressed a public setting like this, and I'm afraid that he's gonna sue the town, and the taxpayers are gonna have to bear the burden of this. So I'm just wondering what the town's gonna do about this.
Up next is John Goodrich.
They're gonna limit your speech to two minutes. That's what they're gonna do.
I have John Goodrich up next.
Yeah, I got the message. John Goodrich was not gonna make it tonight, so that, he said to take his turn for him. My name is Ian Thomas, 24, Jefferson Drive. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board of Education and espoused to Council Bordaloon. I just wanted to speak, first off, just, I, I agree with Gothier and Boucher as far as the topics of their conversation. I don't want to take my time on that, since it's limited. I just wanted to take the opportunity to correct the record. Mayor Franco visited the Board of Ed last week and discussed some matters with the FOI case that was recently decided. I filed a complaint last year in regards to a situation that occurred July 9th, where Councilor Russk made an inappropriate motion to require an apology for me being verbally abusive to the town attorney and also disrupting a previous meeting. This was found. Mayor Franco came to the Board of Ed and discussed findings. The findings actually, is an interesting interpretation, but I will submit these to the record. There's a few articles here from the press, and also the actual finding. I got the final decision in the mail last week, so there has been no appeal. It is a settled matter. I highlighted the section that is most pertinent. Paragraph 12 is a bit of a setup, but basically saying, like, at the time, Councilor Russk interrupted auditor's presentation to financial, for the unfinancial report, moved for a formal apology. The complainant was sitting quietly at the desk. So there was no disruption in the July 9th meeting to justify the Roberts Rules exemption. But moreover, the finding was that it was inappropriate motion, and there is no- But moreover, the finding was that it was inappropriate motion and there is no two-thirds.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Yes.
Up next on our agenda will be the consent calendar. Councillor Boardline, would you like to take the consent calendar?
I'm sorry? Yes, Councillor Boardline.
Councillor Parker?
Yes, Councillor Boardline.
Oh, I apologize. Councillor Parker, I apologize.
Make a resolution, make a, thank you, Madam Mayor. 2025-673, the May 27, 2025 special meeting minutes. Oh, we're moving the whole thing. Consent, I'm move the following, 2025-673, May 27, 2025 special meeting minutes. The following meeting minutes, July 1st, July 8th, and July 22nd, as well as the special trust fund contributions I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Parker, second and by Good. Anybody have any corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
That passes eight to zero to one with Boardline abstaining. Up next, communication reports, other than committee reports. Up first is the Town Council. And Councillor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share this evening?
No.
All right, Councillor Boardline.
Thank you. I just want to say that I did receive a ton of phone calls from people regarding the police matter from all around the state, all around the country, really. Unfortunately, you know, as, for my statement is, I was not at the last meeting, I was virtual due to an illness. What I have to say is basically, the council oversees the town manager, we hire or fire the town manager, and the town manager oversees our town staff. So I believe in due process. I'm fact-finding in all the situation, obviously my decision or my feeling on it wouldn't change anything, but I feel everyone has a right to their opinion and their voice. And so I thank people for who have reached out, tons of emails that have come in. Again, I don't know where I stand on all of this until, but I think due process has to happen, and from there, but I think for both sides of the party, due process is only the right thing. So that's what I say to that. With that also regarding the Board of Ed matter and the FOI regarding my husband, I am personally tired of the attacks on my family, and I personally feel the comments were not needed after a finding was withheld by the ruling. And as it says up here, once a ruling has been final, let it lay. And to go up there and attack at a Board of Ed meeting and watching that was just, to me, embarrassing and very frustrating. Also tonight, we have changed the minutes to our meetings before, if it's been a big crowd, much larger than this, and it usually has gone to three minutes. But also, in fact, they've never put a time limit on it. So we have changed the time, but this is the first time I've ever seen it where they said, "Not only is there a time limit, but we're going to make a time limit, meaning we won't exceed 30 minutes." We've stood here for hours under public comments in the past. This thing has never been in the comment section of our agenda since I've been on here. We've changed the minutes, but never, never have I ever seen it where we've then said, "We're only going to keep it to 30 minutes." And we've had larger crowds than this. So again, I'm not saying I don't agree with the swearing that occurred here tonight as a person who tries my hardest itself, because children may watch this video, so I don't agree with that. But I feel everyone has a right to voice their opinion and speak up and let due process happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can we have order in the galley? Otherwise, we're going to take a recess, please.
Why is such a cavalry recess?
Recession? All right, we're going to take a recess, we're going to come back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:12, we are back from recess. Up next, Councillor Pacino, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything I need to share today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you to the Groton Beautification Committee for inviting me out on Saturday. It was a great time. If you have one hour or two to spare a month, please give the Groton Beautification Committee a call. They are trying to do a lot on very few people, very few volunteers. They can be reached via Facebook or on the town website. Their next meeting is scheduled for August 7th. It is always the first Thursday of the month at 6:30 in the Town Hall Annex, so here. So please come on out and support the Groton Beautification Committee. I want to say congratulations to the city for their 40th City Day, it went very, very well. I was there with Councillor Parker, Councillor Pacino, Councillor Good. If I missed somebody, I apologize. And I am going to address what Mr. Thomas said, I think he stepped out of the room, but I may have made a parliamentary error, but I will never condone somebody coming to a meeting and talking over people, talking over the mayor in this situation, which is why I asked him for an apology. It does not need to come up again, it is what it is. He made his choice, and I did ask him for an apology, he chose not to do it. So yes, my error was in parliamentary procedure, but it was not in asking for the apology. So hopefully that is done, since it is from a year ago. So anytime you'd like to apologize, feel free.
Councillor Boardline, it's inappropriate.
I just think that comment is inappropriate.
Thank you. I think it's inappropriate, you do not have the floor.
I just think it was inappropriate.
You're out of order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to relay something we thanked before, but I'm going to just do it again because I've had some residents reach out about how nice they like the new pickleball courts at Thrive 55. They're getting a lot of use, people are thrilled that they're there. And I just want to, again, thank the Parks and Rec and also the efforts that the council did on bringing those forward. So just a big thank you and the residents are my pleasure.
Thank you. Councillor McBride.
Thank you. Received lots of emails and phone calls, or more emails regarding the police matter that's been discussed this evening. And the only thing I want to reiterate, similar to what Councillor Boardline mentioned, is that my understanding of this council's roles and responsibilities are to ensure the town manager is performing his job, and we hire him or her as needed, and that it's his role and responsibility to oversee all the employees and the department head. So it's not this council's role to be involved in those matters, and I think that information should be clear to the public. And John Burt, if you're able to on your report, if you can potentially, you know, kind of explain that situation, because I think the perception is that this council can act in a manner that I don't believe it has the ability to do so, and I think the public should be aware of what our capabilities are and what our roles are versus what some in public opinion have. So that's all. Thank you.
Councillor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended Groton City Night, a lot of fun. They moved it over and broadened it out a lot, a bit, a lot. I was there with some kids and they all had a great time. Also worked with the Beautification Committee this weekend. Like Councillor Rusk says, it only takes about an hour or two a month, and it really, really does a lot for the town to have people all went here to keep it clean and make it more beautiful. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The charter does say what the Town Council can do, what the town manager does. Charter is online for everyone to read, and I suggest everyone brush up on it. As long as I comment on that. Part two is, there is a process, and we are not involved in it, it is in the hands of the State of Connecticut Department. So that's part two. There will be a pop-up United Way Mobile Food Pantry on August 11th from 4:30 to 5:30. You do have to bring your own bags, and it's going to be at Thrive 55. I attended United Way Mobile Food Pantry, which we do once a month with Councillor Good and Councillor Rusk, as well as I attended the Tommy Toy Fund that was held at Outer Lights, that was a great turnout. And I want to send my sincere condolences for two people that I've met and know. Former Mayor Rita Schmidt and Ms. Marjorie Brooks. Wonderful women, and they will be deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like to make it clear to my community that when I go and speak at the Board of Ed during citizens' comments, I can speak as a citizen, just as though I see other people that come here and speak as citizens, although they are elected officials on other boards, as well as fellow town councillors do as well on numerous occasions. And I don't think we've ever discussed that here as a body. I would like to also notify Mr. Burt that prior to the meeting starting, Councillor Rusk did have spit on her seat. So I know we have recordings in these rooms, so if it would be possible to look at these recordings to see how this played out, it's very inappropriate. And I will say that the amount of time that we are doing as speakers is in our rules. And if you look at other towns and cities, they also have time limits. They also have the amount of time that citizen comments can last. I know for just facts, because I've gone and spoken at one, is at Norwich. They only allow, I believe it's 30 minutes. So this is not unusual, it happens broadly across the state, this is nothing unusual. And actually, I would just want the council to know that I do plan to keep this in play for the remainder of the term that I am the mayor.